Welcome to, welcome to the Ronnie S. Williams Council Chambers. For those of you who weren't here earlier, we had a dedication service to our late mayor. And while the name has been on the Chamber entryway there, today, we made it very, very official and hopefully you had a chance to see the panel picture coming in there. Gives you some history about a gentleman who served this town for many years. So, welcome, and we'll now begin our meeting and I will, at this time, ask the town clerk, if she will, call the roll, please.
Mayor Marshburn.
Here is it.
Mayor Proton Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Members for being here. Thank you, audience, for adhering to our mask policy. If you come to the podium and speak, you can feel free to take your mask off at that time, but we do ask you to honor that. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on Councilmember Matthews, if he will, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also he will have our invocation. Matthews.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for another day of freedom, another day of life. Thank you for blessing the ceremony we had this evening in honor of former Mayor Ronnie Williams and continue to be with the family. Lord, we ask that you be with our country as we're dealing with some troubling times and I ask our leadership that you give them guidance. Lord, be with this council tonight as we deliberate those things that impact our community. Grant us wisdom, grant us a good ear to listen and do the right thing for our community. And as always, we give you the praise and glory. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll jump right into our agenda and the first item on business is something we call petitions and comments. This time in our meeting, when we receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda. So, if you're here tonight and interested parties can choose to appear in person, that's what we would expect. In the past, we did have, I believe, an opportunity for you to appear online. As you appear tonight, the council is interested in hearing your concerns, but they may not take any action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And there's usually a sign up sheet we encourage you to use if you want to use this time to petition the council. Madam Clerk, did you have any names on a sheet?
No, sir.
Okay. So, if you're here, though, and you did not sign up and you came and wanted to speak to the council, now would be the time to let me know of that and we will recognize you. Anybody? Okay, I'm sure there's some here for other items on the agenda. So, thank you very much. Okay, we now will ask the council, if they will, to consider adoption of the agenda as you have it before you unless you, there will be, and when we get to the consent agenda, there will be an add on there that I want to include. But what say you, council, for adoption of the agenda?
Some moved.
Secured.
Okay. Properly moved and secureded, all in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. All right, we have some important presentations this evening and I'm going to recognize our town manager, Mr. Rodney Dickerson, who will recognize our special person and make the presentation. Manager Dickerson.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. It is my honor to recognize Chief Joe Benz tonight and I'm going to ask him to come up. Put him on the lime, the lime light here just for a few minutes. We want to recognize Chief Benz for his 28 years of service to the town of Garner. He first was hired July the 14th, 1963. And just to put that in perspective, gas was a dollar sixteen cent per gallon. Popular movie was Groundhog Day and we just finished talking about Groundhog in a different aspect of one of your favorite movies.
Absolutely.
And.
Love Bill Murray.
Popular songs or singers and groups were Meatloaf, UB40, and Janet Jackson, so you got to pick one.
Me neither.
Okay. All right, we'll try to do better with our selection next time. But on a serious note, he was hired as a police officer here. In 2004, he was promoted to sergeant. And then, once again, 2013, he was promoted to lieutenant and then promoted to captain in 2016. He served as the interim chief starting of October of 2019 and was named chief in October 2020. So, he served as the official chief for about a year. And that's, the relevant thing about that is he is the first chief that has come up through the ranks, starting off as an officer and becoming the chief of the town of Garner. So, you're to be commended for that. He did a lot of things along the way. Just here recently, while serving as the chief and interim chief, he has hired over 30 police officers, have been hired under his leadership. And that's a lot. That's a lot to onboard, that's a lot of, lot of interviews, a lot of applications to look through, and he's brought on some, some very good people along with his staff. He also, very early on, made some changes that he thought would be beneficial to the department. One of those was changing and organizing the department a little bit and instituting a corporal into the ranks. He felt that was a good thing for the department and for succession planning, for upward mobility for the officers. So, and I think he first brought that to me when he was interim. So, when he was interim, he did not shy away from bringing up ideas and things to me that he thought were beneficial to the department and to Garner as a whole. He also deployed Narcan into the department, which is used to fight the opioid epidemic, which we know is, is really bad throughout the nation. And with that, the department has saved over 22 lives. He has a focus on building internal capacity to meet the growing needs of the town. He has gone through a lot of training, been through the FBI, National Academy, taken a lot of courses throughout, to the UNC School of Government, Fellows Program, Pella, and some of those public executive leadership academies. He served this town really well, very, very well, in the police department, but he also served the community. He served on the midday rotary for a number of years, I don't even know how many years.
Present for two years, then treasurer a year and a couple of years back.
So, served the community in that capacity, also on the Police Athletic and Activities League, the PAL program. So, he's been very active, even with his busy schedule at work and being a chief, because as you know, a chief, that's a 24-hour-a-day job. You're not, you don't just always get to go home and relax, there's always something happening. And I know with the officer still out on the street 24 hours a day, his mind is always on that. We also want to, in saying that, I want to also give his family an applause for being there with them, because we know that, you know, when he's chief or a police officer, the family comes with that and it's not just, just him. So, I know y'all are thinking about him each and every day before he comes home. So, Chief Benz has been great the last couple of years in his leadership role. He's been very communicative, been, done a great job communicating things to me, things that I need to know to make the town a better place. We've talked through things, salaries, just different positions in the police department, different programs he wanted to put in place. And like I said, he took his, his 28 years of experience and just came up with things that he thought would make the department better and I appreciate that. And I think even after he's retired, those things will continue to be beneficial to the town of Garner. I also have here, just to say thanks, we have a gift for you, chief.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Don't spin it all in one.
I'm sure it'll spin.
Already spinning, already taken care of, so, but I believe, you know, the department's in, you know, great shape, the way he's leaving it, and I just commend him for all his service and just would give him time to say anything. Do you have anything you want to add?
Just to correct the record real quick, I'm not quite that old. I came in 1993, but I think.
What did I say?
You said 63.
Oh, 60.
I look old, but not quite there yet.
I'm versing numbers.
I was talking with Mr. Singleton earlier this week and we had talked about the fact that I think he came to the Board of Alderman at the same time I was hired as a police officer. So, we've seen this town grow up. It's been, it's been a great opportunity for me to be part of such a great organization, such a great group of leaders, and I appreciate the faith he's placed in me, Rodney, for the last couple of years, as well as the council. So, I would say thank you for my time, I appreciate it, thank you for my family, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks.
And so, I will turn it back over to the mayor to see if you have any comments or.
Sure, yes. Joe, I'll be brief, because I want to give our council members an opportunity to, to make comments and some of them know you perhaps longer than I. But you, you were the one who sort of, I use the term broke me in as mayor. I, you know, I was sort of a Green New Mayor and I remember early on having some conversations with you with, with an issue or two that required your attention and you were very available, came to meetings that I asked you to come to and I personally appreciate that and professionally appreciate it as well. You, you provided some, some advice and some, some real help and I, I wish you all the best, admire the career you've had, it's been a great career, and wish you, wish you well as you step down, you're leaving the department, I think, in very good hands. Got a lot of good officers, several of them are standing around the room here this evening. So, in a time when policing has been made more difficult, you've stood that test, I think, and, and showed your true character and that's been a wonderful thing for our town. So, thank you, my dear friend, very much.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll see if council, I probably want to recognize you, Phil, I'll start with you if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to wish you a lot of luck and you went out in a blaze, a blaze of glory on TV and dealt with some tough issues and thank you for doing the right thing and that speaks well of your, your character and I've always respected you and you leaving the, the department in great hands, it's probably going to kick it up another notch as we move forward, but hope you enjoy retirement, you and your family, and take care of yourself, you'll be, we hope to see you around.
Okay, great, if you don't mind, I'll switch around a little bit and, and go to Elmo and then come back this way. Mr. Vance?
Well, chief, it's been a pleasure, getting to know you and working with you for the short period of time I've been on the council. And like has been said before by Councilman Matthews, hope and pray that you have a great retirement and enjoy yourself and we'll pass the stress of being the chief on to someone else. We know you love the job, but we know we're going to pass that stress on to someone else. And thank you for, for what, for your service and for what you've done, really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I'll come back to Ms. Singleton.
Yes, chief, thank you. As I told you on the phone, thank you for all the roles and positions that you've played as you've come up the ranks, your 28-plus years of service here, speaks so well of you and I think speaks all of Garner, the people that you worked with, your coworkers, that you decided to stay here and, and work in Garner. You know, when you were named interim chief, you got to kind of thrown into the fire. We had a controversial issue, the parade issue, because of some issues, not only in Garner and Wake County, but the state and also the, the nation. You kind of got thrown into that and also this, this issue here, the issue you've dealt with, with the, the dangerous dog issue, you've had to deal with that and appreciate your service and commitment. In between those two issues, you've dealt with a lot of things. Now, you brought us, we talked about last year, we, we made some changes in our salary range and salary and pay plan, and we helped to get all town employees up, including helping the police department and our, our first responders, and that was just very important, I know. You thanked all of us after the meeting for doing that and, and we thank y'all, y'all the ones out there doing the work. So, thank you for your time and your service and wish you nothing but the best in the future.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And Ms. Behringer, Mayor Proton.
All right. I just want, excuse me, want to commend Joe for his, his responsiveness. Every time I ever called him, every time a citizen had come, asked me what to do and I said, "Call Joe," when I checked back with them later, they got a response, a very timely response. I think that we'll be sorry to see you go, we know that we'll have a good chief with Lori, but just, your responsiveness has just been outstanding over the past few years. Your heart has been in your job and, and it shows and we have benefited from it. So, I wish you well in your retirement and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Mr. Dellinger, sir.
Yep. You're my first chief too. Everybody's been my first since I've got here. Really thank you for all, all the years of service and as everyone said, you leave a strong mark on the community and as Gray mentioned, to step in with the parade and then COVID and this dog situation, things that no one has experience for, but you handled them and the department handled them and we're all better for it. So, thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne, appreciate it.
Okay, Joe, as we give you probably another round of applause, would you like, would they, would your family members stand and be recognized, if that's okay?
This is my wife, Amy, and my daughter Kate. Other daughter could make it tonight.
Sure, thank you. All right. Thank you, my friend. Wish you well. Okay, we have one other item under presentations and that's, I'm going to call on Mr. Joe Stallings, our Economic Development Director, and also Ms. Howe, she is here, if you will come forward and there will be a presentation made at this time. Thank you, Joe, and Lori.
While I do this, I will, I'll share a quick Joe Benz economic development story. Whenever I first got here, there was a retailer we were trying to get to take over a second generation empty box and they kept on throwing out statistics at us regarding crime rates. And so, I called, at that time, it was, I believe, Captain Benz and said, "Hey, Joe, I need some help." And just like Councilman, Councilmember Behringer said, he was extremely responsive and sent with me on that call with that, with that company to help illustrate our, our differences of opinion on their statistics. We didn't get the retailer here, but that just goes to show that Chief Benz was as a good partner for economic development as he was even the police department, so it will be sorely missed. Tonight, we are, tonight, we're here to present to you all the 2021 Garner Economic Development Annual Report. We present it every year about this time and so, can't wait to show you some of the statistics and show you all what we've seen over the past year. So, our population continues to increase, which isn't really of any surprise, you drive around Garner and see all the homes being built. And even after the pandemic, we have seen our unemployment rate fall back closer to what it was at pre-pandemic levels. Not quite there yet, but we're inching our way there. This year was the highest number of permits that were issued over the past five years in 1900. Our home sales price continues to increase. And then, one of the big statistics here is our tax base increase, which is over 21%. So, most of that is due to the reevaluation that was conducted at De County, but still a, a striking statistic whenever we think about tax base increase and what's going on here in our local community. On the right-hand side is our statistics regarding commercial space in town. We're still seeing good growth in all of our sectors, but really our industrial warehousing, institutional grade boxes are doing really well and industrial flex market continues to do really strongly. We released an article a few weeks ago about some of the projects that we're seeing here in town and over a million and a half square feet of new industrial and industrial flex product is either being proposed or under construction today. So, if you go by the Amazon plant, look across the street, there's 675,000 square feet going up. Down on Highway 70 out towards Guy Road, there's another 600,000 square feet proposed and under construction today, as well as multiple buildings within Greenfield Nap, excuse me, Greenfield South and Wyatt Business Park. Lease rates continue to rise, so just like home sales prices, the price of commercial real estate in our community is inching its way ever higher. And so, even as new product is brought into our community, those lease rates are staying strong and even increasing. We receive requests for information every year, mostly through the state of North Carolina, the Economic Development Partnership, Department of Commerce, and this year, we did see a decrease in the amount of overall RFI's received. But I think the real story in all of that is that the, the main industry that we did receive RFI's for was for life science and pharmaceuticals, which, you know, kind of coincides with what we were seeing in, in the nation with the pandemic. While other industries were pulling away, there were, you know, billions of dollars being poured into the life science and pharmaceutical industry and we saw that represented in the RFI's that we received. The number of jobs were significant at 9,500 and then the investment as well. Once again, by far, the largest investment category was from that life science and bio-pharmaceutical sector. So, we in the department are doing a lot of work to help secure sites and position properties to win some of these projects. And so, while we did not win one last year, we are very bullish on the fact that we will get one here to Garner soon. Some of the highlights that I was just mentioning, there were in that 1.5 million square feet of industrial space are there on the screen with the Beacon Commerce Park across the street from Amazon, Amazon Delivery Station, which was another 165,000 square foot facility in Greenfield North that opened up this past year, and then Wijian Capital's investment in multiple industrial flex buildings in Greenfield South and Wyatt Business Park. One of the things that we'll be discussing this evening on the agenda and something that we included in the report is the VA outpatient clinic that is being slated for Highway 50 there at Man Road in Arbor, Arbor Green. And really excited about the opportunity of bringing that to our community and really giving the veterans of this entire area an opportunity at a brand-new facility here in the community. That too will bring hundreds of jobs and invest probably well over $100 million in real estate there at that site. But while we all, you know, we, we focus on recruitment and some of the larger aspects of the economy, we also have a renewed focus in entrepreneurship. Things that are highlighted here in the report are two new spaces to our community, the hub, which is being offered by the Garner Chamber of Commerce as a coworking station for local small businesses to come and take advantage of, but also office hours, which just happens to be right beside the Chamber of Commerce building there on Highway 50, is now open and accepting clients. You can rent an office for an hour, a conference room for an hour, or to get into a, a month-to-month lease or something a little bit longer term. Other things that we're really excited about is the Launch Garner Program, which the town, the Downtown Garner Association, the Garner Economic Development Corporation, Chamber of Commerce and Wake Tech, and our Rotary Clubs, all came together to help put this on. And this is an intensive 10-week entrepreneurship program that is designed to take either existing small businesses or those who are wanting to open a small business and walk them through the fundamentals of operating a, a business. And so, we have launched that program. We now have 16 students that are going through the training every Thursday. Will be graduating our first cohort in November and are really excited to bring this to the community. We are the eighth municipality within Wake County that has this program. The last thing on this page was highlighting the work that the GDC, DGA, and Chamber and the Town Council did for Small Business Week in May. So, many of us donned our green shirts and hit the streets passing out thank you cards for our local business owners, expressing our sincere appreciation for their, for their commitment to our community and what they do every day. And so, we wanted to make sure to highlight the fact that we got out there and really tried to tell people, "Thank you for doing business in our community." The Garner Economic Development Corporation continues to be a bedrock of economic development here in our community. In this past April, the GDC announced the creation of their, the Garner Endowment for Education, which the corporation set aside $250,000 at the Wake Tech to help ensure that students of both Garner Magnet High School and South Garner High School will have access to an education in perpetuity. So, each year, a student from each school will be selected for those scholarships and be allowed to attend Wake Tech at no cost to them. We also rolled out the Garner Entrepreneurs of Tomorrow program. This was impacted by the pandemic, so we, a little bit of a late start on it, but we were able to hold the first cohort in the spring of last year, or excuse me, spring of this year, last fiscal year. And this program was designed to teach young high school students how to start their own business. So, over a period of three months, they would take classes virtually and then in April, they did their pitch to a group of business-minded experts and competed for prizes. And so, the GDC helped sponsor that and provided. And so the GDC helped sponsor that and provided the capital needed to get that off the ground, and we were able to give away six laptops to the participating students. The GDC also put together some new marketing materials for the town that focuses on our three main industry targets, which are life sciences, advanced manufacturing, and technology. And those are available at the website at choosegarnernc.com.
Good evening, Council. I'm here to share with you about the impact from downtown Garner. As you can tell, this was a really great year for us. There was a record public investment that was spurred by wrapping up several bond projects, including the new recreation center, the new rand roadway improvements, and a couple of other small things. As you can see, that total investment topped out at just $8 million, which is almost double the investment that we've had from the last five years altogether. We saw a lot of great growth this year. We had two new businesses open, one expand. We had several building improvement projects happen on Main Street this year. We netted 13 new full-time jobs and three part-time jobs, and we had over 400 hours of volunteer service this year, which amounted to a value of $11,405. So, and as most of you know from our recent meetings with both the community and with yourselves, we've made a lot of progress with selecting a developer for the downtown opportunity site. So the rendering that's featured in the report was a really great visualization of what's coming in downtown. We're really excited to be moving forward with them as they're going to be bringing that 5,500 square feet of new commercial space to Main Street, as well as over 50 residential units and 100 new parking spots. And finally, one of our priorities for this year has been to focus on public art initiatives. And one of the initiatives that we have been seeing a lot of great interest in has been our Art Around Town program that just is new this year. So with that, we provided canvases to 23 community artists from Garner and Raleigh. Those are now up on Main Street and Garner Road and at a few select locations at White Deer Park and Lake Benson. If you want to visit our website, downtowngarner.com/arts, there is a walking tour that is available, so you can go check out all the arts, all the different canvases. In addition, there are pages for each of the artists, and our plan is that once the exhibit is completed in mid- to late-November, we're going to auction all the art off, so that the 75% of the proceeds are going to go back to the artists. So that basically is our way of, you know, enhancing Garner's reputation for the arts and also making sure the artists are getting paid, so that it is an economic development strategy that is supporting our downtown, so that when people think of downtown Garner, they think of, you know, this is a place where an artist can come and be recognized and also, you know, have a trade. So we are very proud of having that go on, and we encourage you to visit downtown Garner to check out the art during one of our upcoming night markets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I would like to invite Chairman Jeff Swain to the podium to make a few remarks.
Mr. Swain is the, maybe you've mentioned, is the current chairperson of the Garner Economic Development Corporation, an organization I had the great privilege of serving on for a number of years before becoming mayor. Jeff, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and Town Council members, and that's a good introduction, Mayor, to, you know, why I'm here this evening. And really, what I'm about to do tonight in recognition of what's gone beyond, gone before in terms of the work of GDC, also a reflection of the work of the City Council, Town Council, and as Rodney and John Hodgers and the mayor and Mr. Vance also know, we've been doing this sort of acknowledgement and recognition here for the past number of days and so forth. And what we wanted to do is to recognize all of the individuals who had participated in some way or another in the bringing about of the Amazon project. And of course, it all goes back to 2010 with the vision of the Town Council, the mayor at the time, the administration, that had the vision to create the Garner Economic Development Corporation. And then, of course, you come forward eight or nine or 10 years, 11 years, and here we are today. And I think in Joe's presentation, you can recognize that the partnership that began 11 years ago, which resulted in the Amazon project, also now has legs to it, and a number of things that were included in Joe's report reflect the work of the GDC at the current time, and we certainly hope to continue on that track in this very important partnership. And so it's my pleasure to be here tonight representing the Board of Directors of GDC, and a very special recognition for all of those who have made the Amazon project possible. This is a bowl that was hewn from trees from the Amazon site, and I can't even begin to tell you all the different species of trees and therefore the types of wood, but I'm sure there are others on staff and elsewhere that can describe to you what type of wood the bowl is made of. But, so to each, to the mayor and to each member of Town Council, I believe you have a box and a bowl at your desks, and so I just wanted to, again, recognize the vision from 11 years ago, the ongoing partnership between the town of Garner, the Town Council, the mayor, in ongoing partnership with GDC. And so we greatly appreciate all that's gone before and look forward to continuing our partnership into the future. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much. I would like to recognize one of, Mr. Vance on our council, we've had a liaison person serving on the GDC over the years, and he is currently serving in that compassion, has served for any number of years. Mr. Vance, are there any comments you care to make? I didn't tell you in advance I might ask him, but if you're not prepared, that's okay, too.
Well, I would say that it has been a long, blessed journey, one in which, as I kid people and say that when I started the journey, I was a young man with hair. Now I've gotten a little older, and I don't know where my hair went, but it was a pleasure to work with, it's been a pleasure to work with the team, to see the progress and to see what transpired, the ups and downs and the inevitable landing of Amazon, to bring the tax base back up along with the jobs in the area, to be a stimulus for the area as well. So I would say that it's been a pleasure to work with such a professional team, and I look forward to continue to work with the team going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I could also add, you reminded me that I was remiss in not mentioning that we have made a presentation just yesterday to Bruce Andrews, who was the initial chair of the GDC board, and certainly was instrumental. And as Councilmember Vance mentioned this evening, I think yesterday, Mr. Vance, you commended Mr. Andrews for being so patient and helping you learn some patience in the whole development process. But we presented to Mr. Andrews and also Bill Anderson, who was one of the other three board members, including yourself, Mayor. At the outset, Mr. Anderson has also received a similar token of our appreciation.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Jeff. Joe, I'll recognize you again.
Mayor, that wraps up our presentation. We've had a busy year. We look forward to having an even busier year, you know, coming up, but we're happy to take any questions. This presentation will be available on the town's website, as well as choosegarnernc.com. So please, whether it's the public or someone else, feel free to peruse it at your leisure. We'll also have a few hard copies here at Town Hall, if you desire.
Okay. And I will give counsel, they will be brief, as I'll try to be, if they have any comments or questions. I want to commend both you and Ms. Howe. Over time, I've seen that partnership grow with the downtown work that she does down there and what you're doing, and it's been interesting to watch the two of you work together and some of the creative things that you've been able to do. And so I commend you both for that, and thank you for taking the time to come and report to us this evening. Counsel, any questions or comments? I'll start down here with Damian, if he has any.
Yeah, just a quick comment to thank, you know, both of you for all the hard work that you do in communicating kind of our ambitions to the broader community. I think we've kind of come out of our own shadow a little bit when it comes to what we, the opportunity we are as a town. I also want to especially thank Maury over there, since I serve on Downtown Garner Association along with Kathy, and the hard work you put in, too, reluctantly letting us come over to your house and prime those boards that are now all around town on a hot summer weekend. But that's the kind of work that people don't see that you guys do, and it's, so it's really rewarding to see the fruits of that. So, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Behringer, anything?
Well, this is one topic I could go on and on and on about, but I'll be kind and not do that. The transformation that we've seen downtown, the transformation we've seen in economic development is just beyond description. Over just a few short years, a mission that was accepted and worked on, and the evidence is there. So thank you both for all of your hard work and your creativity and your commitment. It's, we're so proud. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Singleton, anything?
Yes. Joe and Maury, thank you both for your hard work. Great presentation. We've got a lot of exciting things happening. The opportunity site here being focused on, it's going to be a really, really wonderful opportunity for us, and I think with the team that we selected to work on that project, I think we'll see really great things there. Thank both of you for your hard work and your time that you put in.
And Ms. Matthews, anything?
Yes, sir. Every time I see Joe, I say, what else is coming? He goes, what else is coming? I'm a big fan of economic development, and it's odd, last week, I just took some time, just drove up and down all some of the streets, what all's going on down there, plus seeing pictures of things to come through the year of 2020. It was just, it was a challenge, I know, but seeing what y'all have done under those circumstances and where we're going to be going over the next few years is going to be really exciting, and it's going to be exciting to watch all these things happen. So just keep on keeping on, and this board's behind you, so the world's yours. Go get it.
And I wasn't ignoring Mr. Vance. He had a chance to make some comments. Anything else you want to say?
Oh, yes. In reference to the downtown effort, my hat's off to you. It has taken a tremendous leap in a direction of revitalization, which was an issue that ever started early on, and it's good to see that it is taking root and moving forward, and I commend you for your efforts. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both, and keep up the good work. We're proud of what you're doing, and I think our citizens would be as well. So thank you very much. Okay. Counsel, I believe we are now at the consent agenda, and I want to note before I ask you for a motion that you have at your desk there, a request to, I think, add an item there having to do with rescinding a resolution and adopting a new resolution. This has to do with some funds received from the governors. I'm not sure if I'm saying it correctly, I don't have it in front of me, but anyway, there's an increase of funding there. So I would recommend that we add that to the consent agenda, and if you would agree with that, then I'll ask you for a motion with that addition to approve it.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the one item added that we have here for additional funding from the Governor Highway Safety Program.
Second.
Okay. Thank you both. Motion properly made and seconded by Mr. Matthews. So unless there are any comments or questions, Counsel, if you're ready to vote, all in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And there is no opposition. So thank you very much. We're now ready to go into the section of our agenda where we are, we have some public hearings, and I'm going to follow the agenda as it is printed, and I'll recognize Mr. Bamford for the first item, which has to do with annexation. I guess both of those do, don't they, Joe? I mean, it. David.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We've got two annexation public hearings before you tonight. The first one is case number ANX21-05. The site is on Withers Road. This was a small sliver of land that was originally attached to this tract here, and the property that was annexed wanted to connect in the town sewer, and the manhole was located over here, so they had to purchase a small strip of land to get sewer access to the property. So the main site was originally annexed, and now they've come back in to annex this piece that they have now recombined in with the other site. The site's approximately .035 acres in size. It's at 900 Withers Road as zoning and service business. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and again, this is related to a public sewer connection.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bamford. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Bamford on this issue? Anybody? Okay. Are you ready to move approval of this item? And before we go to the next one, I believe it would be the proper thing to do. There is an ordinance to be adopted.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 2021-5065.
Second.
Okay. Made by Mr. Singleton, and I'll recognize, I guess, Ms. Behringer, both she and Mr. Matthews, second of the motion. Any questions, Counsel? Hearing none. If you favor the motion, please vote aye.
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 No opposition, and it is so ordered. Okay, Mr. Bamford, we'll hear from you on item number two.
Sure. The next case number is ANX21-12, and this is for Steel Creek Subdivision, which was rezoned and approved for development near Vandoor Pine Subdivision off of Lagger Lane. The size of the property is eight acres in size. Steel Creek was approved on April the 1st, 2019, for the development of 20 single-family lots, and this development will connect into public water and sewer, so the annexation petition is a requirement of development. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Counsel, questions for Mr. Bamford? Anyone? Okay. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 2021-5066.
Second.
Okay. Motion made, seconded by Mr. Vance. Okay. Any further discussion, Counsel? Hearing none. If you favor the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed to the motion, vote no, and there is none, so it is so ordered. Okay. Thank you very much. Item number three, is Ms. Griffin going to be the main person there? But yeah, that's fine. Let me mention, I believe this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so let me give some oversight instruction as it relates to this. All persons who wish to testify at this hearing may do so, but they must be sworn in prior to giving testimony, and so if you expect to testify at this, we'll ask you to go back to the clerk's area, and she will swear you in. And while you're doing that, I will note that under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing, and so I must ask Counsel, do any members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change? And/or have you had any ex parte communications? Do you have any close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person or have a financial interest in the outcome? If you do, you should note it or acknowledge it at this time, any Council members? Okay. Okay. Hearing none. This is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses, based on training and experience, may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic, safety, and also noise levels. Council members are allowed Council members are allowed only to receive factual information during this hearing, and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. So, with that instruction, I will recognize Ms. Griffin for presentation from the town.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As the mayor said, you do have a special use permit in front of you tonight. That is for the VA Medical Clinic, SUP SP 2003, located at 900 Rand Road, and the applicant is 900 Rand Road LLC, and the owner is 900 Rand Land LLC. But as you know, this is at the, where 50 Rand Road and Arbor Green all intersect. This was rezoned last month to Community Retail Conditional District C240, submitted to the town at the end of 2020, and this is a special use permit request for the development and occupancy of a 250,242 square foot medical office space with adjacent parking deck. There was a neighborhood meeting, actually two, that were held, a remote meeting on May 24th, 2021, and an in-person meeting on May 25th, that should be 2021, with 19 in attendance remote and nine in attendance in the in-person meeting. The applicant did go ahead at those meetings and notify more property owners than was required under our ordinance at that time, including all of Arbor Green, Britmore, and Wood Oak Place subdivisions. This is about 16.3 acres. The minimum lot size for this zoning is 6,000 square feet, and this did go through four full rounds of review by our technical review committee. You see the site plan there before you with the right-in only on Rand Road, the full-access in right-out only on Benson, and the full-access driveway on Arbor Green with right-out restrictions, the parking deck, and the two-story building there. 11.5% tree coverage was required on this site. Based on the amount preserved, they have provided 11.9%. That's 4.7% existing plus their replacement plantings. There are perimeter buffers of 15 feet along the school property line, as well as the property lines with the convenience store. Street buffers of 15 feet along Benson, Rand, and Arbor Green. Anstrut trees are provided every 40 feet as required along all three of those roads, and you see the numbers there of required and provided. This is not located in a property acquisition area for the Parks and Recreation Department, and no open space is required as this is a commercial development. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved the plan. The site does not contain FEMA-designated floodplain or other environmental features. This site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen, as well as quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. The plan does propose three underground structures for both detention and nitrogen, and these devices will satisfy all quality and quantity requirements for nitrogen and detention. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required. This site will be served with City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer through existing infrastructure. Parking is calculated for a medical office, one space for 200 square feet, and that yields 1,252 spaces required. They're providing just over 1,300 spaces, including the parking deck. The proposed lighting meets the requirements of the lighting ordinance, as well as staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. There you see a rendering of the building with Rand Road in the background. This does sit down lower due to topography than the elementary school does, but again, it is a little over 250,000 square feet. It's a commercial building, two floors. It does have an adjoining parking deck that's five levels, that's four covered, and then one that's on the roof, and the exterior finishing materials will consist largely of brick and stone veneer, along with metal paneling and glass. There's another look from the parking deck side as well. The site plan conformity with the transportation plan, Benson Road will be widened on the development side to accommodate half of the Town of Garner thoroughfare section, which is a four-lane divided facility with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. Rand Road will be widened on the development side to half a Town of Garner major collector, which is a three-lane facility with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. Additional right-of-way will be dedicated as necessary. Along both Benson and Rand frontages, a 10-foot asphalt multi-use path will be installed in lieu of traditional five-foot sidewalk. These plans and improvements with these, the plan is in conformity with the transportation plan. For the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Comprehensive Master Plan, this site is not in a land acquisition area, and no open space is required for non-residential developments, and as such, this plan is in conformity with the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Comprehensive Master Plan. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff does find that this project, as now proposed, may be considered consistent with the Unified Development Ordinance, so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to the town. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a recomination plat shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of public utilities fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a nitrogen offset payment is required, and prior to a certificate of occupancy, the stormwater control measures, maintenance plan, and associated memorandum of agreement shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. The worksheet for your motions would begin on page 85 of your packet, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The applicant is here as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Griffin, for your very good presentation. Ms. Behringer, I'll start with you if you have any questions. Mr. Dellinger?
I'll wait for the applicant.
Okay, all right. Mr. Vance?
No questions.
And Mr. Singleton here.
Okay, go.
Mr. Matthews? Okay, none. All right. Well, thank you very much. We'll hear from the applicant representative at this time. Good evening, sure if you will identify your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, members, council. Toby Coleman with Smith Anderson, 150 Fayetteville Street. I have a fear that I can't be heard through my mask. I'm going to go ahead and take it off. Staff gave an excellent presentation. I think it hit most of the key points. I do want to hit a couple of items that have been asked about at both the last council meeting and a couple of other issues, particularly related to the Arbor Green exit. So, we did hear both comments from neighbors, as well as from council, concerned about a desire to further discourage turns on, right turns onto Arbor Green. And so, we have been working over the last two weeks with that, with staff, Mr. Johnson, Planning Department, Stacy, Stacy, as well as everybody else in the, in the city, town staff, to address that issue. This is the latest and greatest. It provides for a, an angled drive, I believe, around 15%, which is what, after review, Mr. Johnson determined was the sort of furthest that it could be angled to the left without creating safety issues for cars turning out. So, that's what we've provided here, and then we've also provided, just to make sure that it is as safe as possible and meets, meets review as we go further on, that the final design shall meet Town of Garner requirements. Basically, to make sure that the driveway will be adequate width so that delivery vehicles can get in, and adequate width so that emergency vehicles and others can get in. One of the other suggestions we heard at the last meeting was a suggestion of a wayfinding sign to further encourage people to take a left. We have added a note on there, and actually, I will show in a couple, a couple minutes, a mock-up of that sign. Just to further show, here is the, here's the left-hand, or the left-angled turn lane onto Arbor Green, and here is the proposed wayfinding sign. Again, it further emphasizes, creates a second sign that says no right turn, and then shows, again, this is a, sort of a mock-up of the wayfinding sign. If, if there are other suggestions, we're certainly open to it. Under the site plan, it just says that a wayfinding sign will be provided. And we have talked with staff, and our understanding is that can be done within a public right-of-way, which is why we're providing. Again, happy to answer any questions. Just had a couple, obviously, this, this is a building, as Ms. Griffin has already pointed out, this building is of compatible scale, and in fact, which sits down below the adjoining elementary school. There is also a landscape buffer and a non-combative screaming fence along the shared boundary with the school to ensure safety and protection. The hours will be consistent with area. It's a Monday through Friday outpatient clinic. There's not, there's not hospital beds. There's not an emergency room, so it will operate consistently with the, the neighborhood and surrounding uses, and it is allowed under the existing use, and otherwise meets all of the criteria for special use permit. So, with that, we're available for questions. I will stop my luring.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'll start with Mr. Vance. Do you have any questions for Mr. Coleman, sir?
I have any questions.
Okay, I'll go this way this time. Mr. Dellinger?
No questions. Just appreciate your diligence working with staff to address some of these concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Behringer, anything?
No questions.
Okay, Singleton.
I agree with Mr. Dellinger's comments. Thank you for addressing that.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, anything? Yeah. And I can, I thank you for your good presentation, and it looks like you've worked out some concerns that the council had before. That's commendable, so thank you, sir, very much. Is there anyone else from the applicant who is planning to testify this time? Okay, don't see any others. Okay.
If I might, it does turn out we also need a annexation application for this parcel, so we would ask that you would add that as a condition as well, if you approve the special use permit.
Okay. Council, any further discussion amongst yourselves before a motion, I believe, is in order? Fairly clear presentation here, so is there a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor, it, as a Vietnam veteran and one of two veterans on this facility is really needed for the southeastern part of Wake County, Harnek County, Johnson County, and it'll save a lot of veterans. I was talking to one today, had the privilege of being at Montlonga, was burying the Vietnam dead out that way. The guy was coming, he said, "I'm driving to Durham." He said, "I gotta go to Durham." I'm thinking, "One day, you won't have to drive to Durham." And so, on, so as a veteran, gives me, I like the honor of regarding SUP SP 20-03, the VA clinic. I find the application, SUP SP 2003 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2 DAS and Delta. Therefore, I move that Town Council approve SUP SP 20-03, the VA Medical Clinic, with the five specific conditions to be listing on the permit that will be provided by our staff.
Okay. Motion properly made. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you may need to add that one other condition about annexation, so that'll make it six total.
Yes, the annexation request, is that right?
Correct.
Could you just add that to your motion?
Anexation petition will be filed.
Yes, that the, that the property be, be annexed into the Town of Garner.
Or annexation petition will be filed.
Excuse me, yes. Okay, all right. Thank you, Phil. Okay, is there a second, council? Okay, properly seconded by Ms. Behringer. Any other discussion, question, council? Okay, if you favor the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
There's opposition, and there is none, and it is so ordered. So, thank you very much. As Mr. Matthews so ably said, when we first heard about this, I've forgotten how long ago, several months ago, I remember a neighbor of mine up the street that I knew was a veteran, and he read about it in the, the news, I believe, and he walked down the street and said, "Mr. Mayor, I want to congratulate you." I said, "Well, it's, it's not my doing," but he was excited, as Phil mentioned, that there would be something closer by, and I think there are a lot of veterans in our area who will greatly benefit from a facility like this, so.
If I may say so, I would like to add to that, what Mr. Matthews and the mayor have said. My late father-in-law was a World War II veteran, and he was a Marine, and that pretty much says it all. Wish he had not had to go to Durham all the time. In his later years, that was difficult, and had we had something closer by, then his life would have been just a little more comfortable to someone who so very much deserved it. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, council. That manner is, has been approved, so we appreciate that. Mr. Bamford, are you the next person presenting on item four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, excuse me. Mr. Bowie was sitting way in the back, so come on up, sir. CZ 2107. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce conditional zoning amendment CZ-21-07, 5001, 5005, Old Stage Road. General case information, the applicant is Playmaker Properties LLC. They are also the owners of the property. It's located at 5001, 5005, Old Stage Road, and the tract size is 1.74 acres. The requests to rezonate single-family residential R20 to Community Retail Conditional CR, C247, written conditions only, and there is no site plan with this petition. The range of CR uses have been limited to 21 out of a possible 52. We have here aerial site location. As you can see, it's at the intersection or corner, near the corner of Old Stage Road, Maxwell Drive, and Fayetteville Road. Here's a street view of the location. Adjacent zoning and land use. To the north, we have Service Business, which is occupied by Center Tractor Company Incorporated. To the south is Residential R20, and is a single-family home. To the east is Residential R20, St. Andrews United Methodist Church, and to the west is Service Business, Mike's Chapel Church. Zoning history, there have been a few properties that have been rezoned in recent years. First is CUD-Z0605 Mesa Codura, Fayetteville Road, CR2SB, C139, CUDZ0802, Home State Developer LLC, Maxwell Drive, and they also rezoned CUDZ, another property, Z0802, Home State Developer LLC, Maxwell Drive. Both of those were R40 to R9, C153, CUDZ1504, Eric Williams, Fayetteville Road, Community Retail to Service Business Conditional Use, SBC-178, and CUD7 1901 Evergreen Construction, Pine Woods Drive, CR the multifamily residential, residential use MF2, C214. Existing zoning summary, single-family lots, single-family residential R20, single-family lots of at least 20,000 square feet. lots of at least 20,000 square feet, gross maximum density is approximately 2.18 units per acre. Examples include single-family dwellings, and as special uses, such institutional, public, and other compatible uses, that are designed not to detract from the healthful and quiet residential living. The site contains two single-family homes. Here we have the proposed, the applicant has proposed community retail conditional CR C247, and again, they have selected 21 permitted uses from the list of 52. In those, you'll have daycare, educational facilities and services, government facilities, healthcare, religious institutions, office, retail sales and service, commercial parking, restaurants, vehicle sales and service. The reason for the request is to, the owners want to market, to market the site to potential commercial users. They have not submitted a site plan at this time, and zoning conditions limit range of community retail uses, and there are currently two single-family homes on the lots. The applicants have owned both lots since 2014. The overall neighborhood character, the site is located near the intersection of Fayetteville Road, Old Stage Road, and Maxwell Drive. Fayetteville Road and Old Stage Road are classified as thoroughfares on the Garner Transportation Plan and handle high volumes of traffic during the morning and afternoon peak hours. The area around this intersection consists of single-family residential, retail, commercial, churches, and industrial uses. There are also some undeveloped lots near the intersection of Fayetteville Road and Old Stage Road. Neighborhood meeting, staff identified about 18 properties within a notification radius, and a list was provided to the applicant to mail these notices out. Meeting was held on September 7, 2021, with one person in attendance. And you can find more information about that in the staff report. Traffic information. For context, the NC DOT average daily traffic county history in the areas as follows. Old Stage Road, 2009, 11,000; 2011, 11,000; 2013, 11,000; 2015, 11,000. There is no information available for 2017, and there was a slight uptick in 2019 to 12,500. Fayetteville Road, 2009, 30,000; 2011, 28,000; 2013, 28,000; 2015, 30,000; 2017, 30,000; and When considering a rezoning request, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning approval proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans. These plan includes 2018 Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, 2010, 2018 Garner Transportation Plan, Parks Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. In addition to approving that statement regarding plan consistency upon the advice of the planning commission, the Town Council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Staff recommends that once Town Council has heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that conditional zoning request CZ 2107 be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding the request consistency. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. Counsel, you've heard the presentation, and won't be a vote tonight, but we refer to the planning commission, I guess. But Ms. Singleton, I'll start with you, sir.
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Behring.
No question.
Okay, down here, Mr. Vance.
No questions.
And Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, what is this plan for that intersection of Old Stage and 401? What's the long-term plan for that intersection?
There is a street widening project that's in the works. I think it's been delayed a few times. I think Mr. Banff can speak a little bit more to that than I can at this time.
I have just a little bit of information. There is a state project called U5302, and that's the super straight project for this section of 401. And according to our transportation planning, the design part of the project has been completed, and the plan is to start construction next year, 2022, with completion of 2023. That's not the whole stretch of 401, just this section, which I believe may start up at Mechanical Boulevard and come down just slightly south of Old Stage Road. Well, it's not the entire section, but just this segment, I guess phase one. So that whole area is going to be redesigned when DOT finishes that.
Thank you. My other question was on the community outreach. They had sent sort of the formal notification per the standards of our UDO and had one person in attendance, but I see that these properties, but St. Andrews United Methodist Church, is that correct?
Yes.
That's some, what do I say? Low effort public outreach. I would suggest they reach out to their neighbors to get some feedback. That'd be my recommendation to pass to them.
Okay. I'll pass that along to them. Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Vance, did I give you?
I have no questions.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. I think I covered everybody, is there any, yeah, okay. All right, I think that's all the questions. Are there other persons who are going to testify on this? Okay, please come to the podium, sir.
Sir, you can come to the center podium right here.
Okay, great.
You state your name and address, if you will, for the record.
My name is Steve Janowski, I'm with Rivers and Associates. I represent Playmaker Properties for the rezoning. And just kind of give you some background, we first presented this rezoning as an SB, which has a little over 70 uses, and in our, working with the staff, they basically said the things that we were looking at to do all fit inside the CR, which was a lighter zoning, so we, the applicant resubmitted with that. Chris Johnson reached out to us and showed us the NC DOT plans, what that looked like, and they're available as public record. What the NC DOT is, they call it a pork chop. The light, there's a light there now. Basically, there'll be a leftover on to Old Stage, and there will be only a right turn movement into Old Stage and a right turn movement out of Old Stage. And so, anything that we do will all be right turn movements out of the site, right turn on to Old Stage. Once we get on Maxwell, that would be a right turn off of Maxwell. And then there's the new, I guess, the roundabout, or not roundabout, but turnaround safety zone where you can go a certain distance towards the north on Fayetteville Road, then you'll turn around if you were trying to make a left turn. We did reach out to the church, and matter of fact, we were asking if we could have our public meeting at the church. So they were very much aware that those delegates were there, and Mr. Green was from Presbyterian Church across, he was representing them, and so he was their representative of their directors to come, so one person, but represented many voices for them. The uses we had, 21 out of 52, very specific in general, I think that we came into agreement with planning staff that those made sense in terms of the size of the lot, what the neighboring uses already were, and you can see that you've basically, from a history place, as those areas became CR and SB around there, you know, basically, in residential for many years, it says RA20 is typically a holding zone, you know, just waiting to see what happens, and so we could have gone either one of those two particular zonings, and we chose the lesser of the two. And with the new conditional use opportunity, it gives us some specifics. When this property goes on, if it's the planning board and council's pleasure that this does get rezoned, then we will go, whatever that use may be of those 21 uses that could come in, that will then go back and forth with planning board. It will be scrutinized with the UDO. The traffic patterns and movements that we would have would be compatible not only with them, but we're going to have to have DOT driveway permits, so they'll be working in conjunction with whatever's going on right now. But we're basically restricted to right in, right out regardless off of Old Stage Road, just simply because of the design. You can't cross over the concrete medians that they're proposing. And on Maxwell, obviously, we can make a left turn, and Maxwell's in the same condition. It has to make a right turn, and then if it wants to make a left turn, then it has to make a right go down into a leftover, make the safety movement, and then get into a flow going southbound on Fayetteville Road. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Janowski? Anybody here on this end, over here, any? Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else care to offer testimony at this time? All right. Okay, hearing none. I believe this action is recommended that the, this goes back, this goes to the planning commission, and then it will come back to this council. Am I right on that? I believe, yeah, okay. So this matter is ripe for a motion, counsel, to that effect, if you're ready to present that in vote.
Mr. Mayor, I move that conditional zoning request CZ 21-07 be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion made by Mr. Vance, seconded by Ms. Behring. Any other discussion, counsel? If not, I'll call for a vote. If you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And there is no opposition, and it is so ordered. Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, I believe we can go on. Is everybody comfortable? Does anybody need a break? Okay, we are now at item one, under new and old business, and this is a matter that was before this council, I guess, at the last meeting or the one prior to that. And I believe, Ms. Attorney, is the proper action to reopen the hearing that we had before? It was tabled, I believe is the term that was used here.
Right. I reviewed the video from the last meeting, and while there was some discussion about closing the public hearing, I don't think it was actually closed, so I would suggest that this is a continuation of that public hearing. If you hear any additional information, you can close it after that and consider it. Because it is a special use permit, I will, for the record, note that I had an ex parte communication with counsel regarding the fact that the applicant has withdrawn the request to have an access easement across town property at Thompson Road Park. And that was the only communication I had with you between the last public hearing date.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, so we will hear from Ms. Jones at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you stated, and Attorney Jones stated as well, this is a continuation from the last meeting, and I just wanted to let you know that only thing has changed is that they have choose, the applicant has chosen to access the tower from off of Thompson Road through the, I won't say the parent site, the owner site, lease site, however you want to say it, and not using the access they option that you all saw before, that was going to access the site from Thompson Road Park. Do you have any questions for me? The attorney is here for the applicant as well, so we're here if y'all have anything.
Okay, and thank you for further deliberation in bringing it back. Counsel, questions for Ms. Jones? Ms. Singleton, do you have any?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews. Mr. Vance.
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger. Okay, and Ms. Behring. Okay? None at that time. Let's see, is the applicant going to testify? Yeah. Good to see you again, sir.
Good to see you. I'm Tom Johnson here on behalf of, with Williams Mullen here on behalf of the applicant, and we just decided to go with the other route. There were a lot of things we would have to go through to address town concerns about coming through the park, so we just decided to stick with going through Mr. Thompson's property to the site. He's our landlord, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Wyfer here.
Okay, all right. Any questions for the attorney, counsel, anybody? Okay, hearing none. Sounds like your course of action meets with the council's approval. That is, going across the other property there, yeah?
Right.
Okay. All right, anybody else here to testify in this manner? Okay, thank you very much. I believe it will be proper to close the public hearing at this time, is that right? Okay, so, public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
I have one question, a technical question. So is the easement on the other property included as part of this permit?
Across the town property?
No, the existing, the site property.
This is Thompson's property?
Is that included as part of the permit? That that's the permit, that will be the easement that is used?
Yeah, the ingress, egressment, yes, it will be.
Okay.
To them to access the tower and come back, yes.
Okay, so that's a final decision on that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
You're not going to do the other one, so yeah, this is final.
Okay, that's all, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the one condition, is that?
Yes, that's the only condition that, yes.
Okay.
Because it was two previously, but the second condition was to amend the Thompson Road Park site plan.
Right, right.
There's nothing to do that now, so it's only one condition.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you all. So, motion still in order, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we found the application SUP SP 2101 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2. D. Therefore, I move that the Town Council approve SUP SP 21-01, the Thompson Road cell tower with the one site-specific condition to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton, for your thorough motion, and seconded by someone down here, was Mr. Dellinger. Yeah, okay. All right, motions properly before the council. Unless there's any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. If you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, it is so ordered, and I thank all of you for the process we went through to get to where we want to be, I think. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good to see you, sir. All right, one other item under new and old business is item number two, which is text amendment, and Mr. Trezenberg, our planning director, is with us to make a presentation at this time.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just for the record, we wanted to come back to you with this item one more time under old business. We last talked about this at the August work session, and at that meeting, I took away from that a general acceptance of entertaining the idea of potentially amending our canopy tree tables for the rest of the community, not just the downtown area. So you see those on, I believe it's page 112 of your packet at the top, so items, subsections D and E. That is currently what reflects currently what we have that will be presented for discussion to the UDO Steering Committee on Thursday. We at least wanted to go ahead and get it in this text amendment package so that we can move forward with. package, so that we can move forward with some recommendations on that, should we choose, whether it's this or something else that we had come up with during the committee time, that we would like to entertain and present formally at public hearing. But at least just wanted to work that into the package, so that you know that it's coming, potentially. And then, like I say, we'll see how the discussions go on Thursday with the steering committee, and then we will bring forth that recommendation, together with the other amendment proposals, to the public hearing in October.
Okay, I think you just answered my question, that is, you anticipate that it'll be ripe for a public hearing in the month of October, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, if you have any questions on that, I'll be glad to-
Yeah. Any down here? Okay. You good? Down here?
Yes, a question. So, what we're doing here is what, like, previously, we were talking about taking it and what we discussed previously, and going to the UDO committee, and then discussing it, and coming back to council. It sounds like we're taking something to the UDO committee, and then they're discussing it, and it's coming back. But I thought we'd already sort of discussed it here.
We had, but it wasn't actually in your proposed text. So, we just wanted to be sure that we were putting out the entire package, so that the folks knew what the entirety of what was being considered under this amendment would be.
I just want to say, I mean, my concern still is that what came to us first time on this wasn't really reflective of what that committee's preferences were. I wouldn't say there was, it was unanimous, but there was definitely more of a consensus towards a higher number than this. And so, I'm a little concerned that we're sort of anchoring the conversation that might be had on Thursday. I don't want there to be a perception that council, this is what council thinks is what we need to do when we have that conversation on Thursday.
Yes. So, there is, for the entire Garner Forward rewrite, there are some other pieces, the way they've restructured the landscaping ordinance, that will feed into the whole tree preservation portion of the discussion. This is just one piece of that. So, it's just really a matter of, if we think this is worth going ahead and throwing this part of it in now, we can give it a try and just see how this part of it goes in the meantime. But yes, and we'll be discussing that Thursday, the whole-
And I agree with the approach.
Yeah.
But I think you want to err on more, so you can cut back when, because it's what we've discovered in the UDO committee, is it's a very complicated, as we move other pieces of open space preservation and counting this, the numbers get harder than what we currently have. And so, I think it's easier to start high. And then, as you go through, and a developer says, "I can't do this, but I'm preserving this over here. This is counted as open space," we can say, "Okay, not 25, go down to 15." If we anchor low, we can't impose anything more stringent. So,
Gotcha.
I'm going to push for that, because I see we make exceptions all the time, and we don't have anywhere to go but down.
Yeah.
And so, I want to make sure we have flexibility, but also make sites viable at the same time. Give ourselves some wiggle room, basically. So, that's my comment going into Thursday.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else from council? So, I don't think the council's taken any particular position in one, until you bring it back after. Okay.
Yeah.
So, let me see, that's the, we, at this point, we don't need to take a vote, I don't believe?
No. Again, just wanted to go ahead and apprise you of that. We'll still move forward with the initial direction from the work session, that we'll go ahead and schedule this for public hearing. But just wanted to give you the update, that we have added that in for consideration, and to let you know that we will be talking about it Thursday with the steering committee. And then, it'll move forward from there through public hearing and-
The regular process.
And then, back to y'all for final.
Yeah, okay, Joe.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate that, sure enough.
Sure. Quick night for six planning items.
Okay, yes, for sure. All right.
Thank you very much.
I was looking for some more hearings on here. Have we completed them?
Light your lamp.
Don't jinx it.
Okay, thank you so much, all of you, for your expeditious work. So, we're to committee reports. And I know, let's see, you should have at your desk, I believe, some information relating to the HR committee. Am I right on that?
Correct.
And let me just say, before I recognize you, I was, I know you gentlemen have been working diligently and spent time. I was up here one day, I've forgotten, I was in the office, and they said, "Hey, HR's over there interviewing away." So, thank you for your diligent work. And we'll hear from you at this time.
Yes, sir. And I'd like to thank Mr. Dellinger and the staff for working, as you said, Mr. Mayor diligently in this process. And we are just about complete. You have two applications that are before you for approval on the night. Mr. Tim Montgomery, Mr. Montgomery is a past, a past member of the council. He was selected to be the, one of the new members for the Parks and Rec Committee, and we asked for approval of him. And also, for the Veterans Advisory Committee, we're asking for approval of Ms. Rosemary Rockford, for you, to be approved, to be approved tonight. And also, like to let you know that there are two others that we have to make contact with, to see if they are, if they have been, if they're interested, they have been approved. We just got to see if they are interested in serving, confirm that they are, they want to serve. So, that should complete, once we have their communications that they want to serve, the interviewing process and the selection process for the various boards and committees. But, of course, before you tonight, we would like to get a motion on the two individuals that have been mentioned to you for the Parks and Rec, one for the Parks and Rec, and the one for the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you, sir. And-
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Just a comment. And I go to my committee report, which is the veterans. And I don't mean to jump ship here, so forgive me if I'm a little bit out of context here. But, we did have a meeting, and I know there's three veterans' applications that have, after our meeting last week, that they were going online to do. These were veterans in the community with all the projects coming up, and would be very qualified, because all of them are veterans. And so, we were trying to get the people on that committee to, that, because there's a lot required of events coming up, and have the best people we can. So, I just want to make sure that their, their applications didn't get pushed back based upon qual, because I've seen this one here. I'm not sure who this individual is, but how much they're tied in with VA or veterans or military, did they have a military background. So, that concerns me a little bit on that, just that person, that one individual. So, with three, I know that went online to get their packet in this, after our meeting last week, very enthusiastically, well qualified. So, I don't know how, not taking anything away from you guys, but, you know, I'm looking for those qualifications as we point these people on these boards. And that one just happened to catch my eye, that, since that is my committee, that we consider all of those before really locking in on one individual. Because we have an overflow of applicants now, qualified veterans that want to serve on that, and they're from the town. So, how that impacts what we're talking about here. How many of y'all had the interview? I know we're trying to fill committees, but I'm not sure we'll put the right people on those committees, whoever those committees are. So, that's just a concern of mine.
Just to let you know also, we are working diligently to fill the positions with the best applicants that we can as well. So, we hear you clearly and understand your concerns. Mr. Dellinger, you want to add something to that reference to the selection process?
You know, we had a lot of applications over a set period of time, and interviewed a lot of folks. And Ms. Rockford here is actually a VA psychiatric nurse. And so, we figured her, that skill set with the VA clinic would be helpful from that angle. I think we did receive some additional applications last week, which, again, sort of out of cycle. I think we, we still would have one slot, we have one person to contact. So, I think-
We had three openings.
Yeah, and we have one before you. So, I think what we may do is, Mr. Vance and I may confer and see, but the reality too as well, that people can participate in the committee and not necessarily be a member of the committee. But I think we're going to have to discuss that and see, because we've been at these interviews a minute. Well, we'll talk, let's talk after, we'll talk after, and see. But we, we had a really good feeling about Ms. Rockford. She, again, is a very interesting skill set and a lot of enthusiasm. That's a-
Just a quick comment, Phil.
So, I didn't mean to interrupt that. And that was out of all due respect to you guys' hard work and efforts, you know, but that was just a concern of mine, of that committee with all we've got coming up, some very big things coming up. And so, I just make sure we've got the qualified people in there.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. And just a quick comment, yeah, I hear your concern, even though I know that committee has always had a strong contingent of veterans, but I don't think every single person on the committee is a veteran. And having served on HR myself a number of years ago, there are any number of, you know, issues to look at for a person who applies. And certainly, veterans receive a strong consideration. But I think there can be persons on that committee, and apparently, they have found one here, that would not necessarily be a veteran, but brings a strong perspective that would help the committee still do the things that you would expect the veterans committee to do. That's just a general comment. I know you guys are going to talk some further.
We will discuss further, not an issue.
Yeah, okay. All right. I think, coming from a committee, let's see, I guess you could make the motion. You're moving that the council accept these two persons that you have applications on tonight, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, motions by Mr. Vance, I guess. And is there a second from counsel?
From Mr. Dellinger, he's the other person in the committee.
I'll second it.
There we go.
Okay.
We're kicking.
There you go. Motion's properly before us, notwithstanding any of the comments that have been made. Motion is ripe for vote. So, if you favor the motion to select these two persons recommended by the HR committee, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you are opposed to either one of these, would you vote no? Okay. Again, thank you for your work. And you're almost there in terms of getting them all filled, right? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, manager, I recognize you, Mr. Dixon, for manager reports.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have two items in your Garner info that we're working on. Item two there, the bond referendum, just happy to report that on Tuesday, September 14th, the local government commission approved the town's resolution to have a bond referendum in November. So, that was good news. Our bond council represented us on that. Also want to talk to you about a few events that are coming up. The Garner Night Market will continue on Friday, September 24th, which is in a few days from now. At the same time, we will be kicking off the Garner Rec Center. We'll have a community open house from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on that same night. We're working to get some shows back in the G-PAC, and we're going to kick that off with our Showtime series. We're going to have The Shadows of the Sixties on October the 9th. They've been here before and have been a big draw. We're selling tickets for that now. And I think they're selling pretty well, even early on here. We're going to have a couple of special shows that include country music recording artists, Deanna Carter.
Dina.
Dina, I'm sorry. Ooh. Dina Carter.
There's a contract provision that her name be pronounced correctly.
Yeah, very important, her name is pronounced correctly. My fault. Dina Carter. And we're going to have Music in the Park in partnership with Garner's own, Lorraine Jordan. So, that's something we're working on in partnership with her. And a full schedule of the Garner Performing Arts, including Showtime series, can be found at Garner, www.garnerperformingartscenter.com. Also want to remind you of the special meeting that the council and staff have with the consultant to talk about park planning. That's going to be Thursday. It'll start at 8:30 a.m. in the training room upstairs.
Okay. And that's something that we've discussed before, or has been in the works, I believe?
Correct. It'll be talking about, it'll be the 30% plans, and they'll also talk about some phasing for Jürgen Park and Meadow Brook Park.
Yeah, okay.
And some of the elements in the park.
Okay. Any questions for the manager on the reports? I might just observe that I'm excited to see that we're getting some musical venues and others back in the G-PAC. And I believe I remember the show, The Shadows of the Sixties. Forgotten how far back that goes, but it was a good show, yeah.
It's got to be good, you know?
Yeah.
It's got to be good.
Are there any restrictions on car seating or anything?
There will be some restrictions. We're looking at now, I think we're doing some surveys of some area venues to kind of see what provisions they're putting in. We will have some type of social distancing, maybe less than six feet, but we're going to require masks. So, I don't want to say in particular exactly what it's going to be, but we will not be selling every seat.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And I believe, Ms. Jones, you didn't have any report tonight, is that right?
That's correct. No report. Had no closed session.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's a rarity, based on our past history, right? Yeah, thank you. Counsel reports, as I go to each one of you, let me just give a little more explanation. If, at this time, any of you who did not have an opportunity to speak at our service this evening, we felt like we needed to limit because of the time constraints. And so, the persons who spoke were folks who had probably had the longest history in working with the former mayor. So, that was a big part of that decision. But if, obviously, if you, you know, we welcome any comments, if you care to make them now, and any of your other comments. So, let's see, Phil, I'll start with you over here, and we'll work our way around.
As I alluded to earlier, we had the veterans committee. We met last week. The manager was there, did a great presentation on the upcoming bond, the American Legion and VFW. They wanted additional packets to take back to the membership to, in support of. I thought it was well received. Had a very good meeting. An overabundance of attendees, which was a good thing. And it's better to have too many than not enough. And with, a lot of things we're looking at, once we can get back into some of our services, like veterans, as well as Memorial Day, and potentially, the wall coming back, and it's a lot involved in all of that. So, we've got, we've got a good group of worker bees, and they're excited about it. So, it was a very good meeting.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Ms. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank our police and fire departments for the 9/11 ceremony that we had. I thought it was very well done. It's available, you can watch it now on our webpage and on our YouTube channel. And so, I think it was a very well attended. You never know with something like that, how people come. I always wish there were more people there, but I think the folks over there were certainly quite sincere. I know that Channel 17 interviewed a gentleman who was working as a, I believe, medic, then moved here in Garner a few years ago. And so, it was emotional for him. So, I appreciate the time and effort put in there by those who planned and worked on that ceremony. Our town hall works good for an event like that. You know, where they can stand on the steps, stick down. It really does work nice. And you've got parking, adequate parking was available, so it did well. Also, I did, was able to catch the Facebook bond presentation today. I don't think y'all had any questions, but I did see Rodney, you and John make your presentation. And so, good job. I think you're going to have a couple more. So, trying to get it out there for people to see. So, I mean, that's all we can do, is put it out there for people to see and, you know, try to get support from the community in all of this, of these efforts, of these, the 69 million-
from the community in all of this, of these efforts, of these, of the $69 million bond reference. I appreciate your time and effort. And Rick's also doing that. That's all.
Thank you, Greg. Ms. Behringer?
Just a couple of things. I spoke with the, I guess, an assistant in the District Five Engineers Office for D O T about that, it's not a pothole, but that place at the intersection of New Rand Road and Garner Road. And they, he told me they do plan to fit to come and repair that. He couldn't give me a date, but it is on their list. So that's, that's good news. Also have a question about the tennis courts on Garner Road. The parking lot there is in terrible shape. Is that, that is town property, correct? The tennis courts on, I said Garner Road.
On Creech.
Creech Road.
Yes, that is.
Okay. Can somebody have a look at that? It's, it's pretty beat up. And that's all, sir.
Okay.
And that's the parking lot you're referring to, not the courts, but the actual parking asphalt. Okay.
And that was reported by a Parks and Rec Advisory Committee member last night as well. So we'll, we'll get both, both of those recorded.
Thank you. Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, we, this kind of falls into committee update, but we did have a Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting last night and had a bond presentation from Mr. Hodges and Mr. Mercer. And they did a great job. Thank you. Good conversation, a lot of good questions and clarifications on some things. I have a question on an email Mr. Dickerson sent out on Friday regarding the community gardens. And there was mention that you'd met with them last week and that they had a good discussion and that there was, that Thompson Road still seemed to be a viable site, but there were still a few outstanding limitations or concerns. What, sort of the nature of the
Yeah.
One of the things that we talked about is
You know, the town's been talking for a number of years about Greenway that would service the, you know, Buffalo Road area. And that park is one of the considered routes. So we want to make sure it doesn't interfere with that. They did, you know, they prefer to have a site that has water readily available. And I think there is a well there at the front, but I don't, I don't believe there's water in the back of the property.
Isn't there a water fountain?
On that back parking lot?
I'm not sure about that.
I think I've seen one when I went out there. I think there's a water fountain on the kind of north side of that parking lot, unless it's just for show.
And that, that was, so that was the other thing. And then the other thing was, we do have a, a group, a nonprofit athletic association, the football team. And we need to talk to them about their use of that field. You got a big field, but because multiple age groups practice, sometimes they will use that smaller field. So we just want to make sure it doesn't, it's not going to interfere with their programs.
Does it sound like any real huge, unsurmountable issues that
Oh, I, I don't think there, it's still a possibility. The, the other thing is, we, we are continuing to look at other town properties as we brainstorm. And we also have a couple of private situations that might turn out to be more beneficial than anything the town could provide. And there is some support from some, a couple of private property owners that could work out.
Okay.
And they are going to be having discussions with both of those property owners pretty soon.
Okay. Yeah, it's good to be as kind of specific as, as possible around what some of the challenges are, so that we can kind of continue to have a discussion on, you know, addressing those or, you know, they don't, like I said, to me, they don't sound like they're just, they're showstoppers.
Right.
Just a few things we need to examine a little bit further and make potential accommodations for. So
Yeah, we brought all of those up during the meeting. So we
Okay.
We made them aware of those concerns.
Thank you.
The other, the other thing with Thompson, too, that would be somewhat of a concern is it's a restricted access park. I mean, it has a gate. So we would, we'd have to give, you know, a private group key to our gate or access.
What are the current gate access hours for that park?
The, oh, it's, it's locked at dusk.
But it's open like all day?
It's not. I don't know if they open it every day, but it
Should be open from dawn to dusk.
Okay.
There's
Dusk, so.
And, and we did share with the group, too, that we, we have, we've had some challenges in the past with some folks using that, that park for not allowed uses. And, and a lot of concerns from the neighbors when that would happen. So we've had to work through that over the years to make sure that, that we were keeping patrol of that park. So that's just
It'd be good to have people actually in there doing gardening to have an eye on the property. The more activity you have back there, the less opportunity there is for other people to be doing stuff they're not supposed to. So it sounds like it'd be good.
Yeah, it's still a possibility. We just want to look at all of the other things that are on the table, too.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that's all I've got.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
Yes, just in reference to Mayor Williams, I'd like to say a few things that basically be a repetition of what has already been said. There was no doubt that he loved the town. He never, in my opinion, met a stranger. He immediately began to make, make conversation with me as soon as he met me. Was extremely personable and really got close to him doing Scotty McQuarrie's win of the Idol. And I couldn't make it out to, to Scotty's mini concert he had at the park. And because I had a terrible headache that day, and I called the mayor and said, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to be able to make it. And he, he, he talked to me like a big brother. He said, Elmo, you can't make everything. It'll be all right. So just that, just his personality was one that was, when I appreciate, will not forget. And I will echo what Council McGray said about the nine 11 ceremony. I think it was well done and well presented. It was a special moment. And also in reference to bond presentations, I think that they are well done as well. They are concise, to the point, and ask the questions. I think that's the way it should be done. And even I could understand it very well. So this has been very, very well done. And thank you for the, all the hard work that's been put in. And that's all I have.
Okay. All right. And the mayor take a privilege just to mention two things. Again, we're going back to what was mentioned for Mayor Williams commemoration about how proud he was of the town and how he touted Garner. So this past week, I had the privilege of being host for the Wake County mayors who meet monthly. And we've been going around to different places. So they were hosted here in this building. Many of them had not seen the building. They were impressed with the building. And the video we showed them of some of the economic development, well, it's economic development, uh, video, got rave reviews. And so I was very pleased to, to be able to host those gentlemen and let them see something about Garner and what we're doing over here as well. So, so that was a neat evening. The other thing I would say would be generally, I guess, an appeal to anybody who's watching, to the public in general, and that is COVID and the variants and all the other things you want to refer to are still very much out there and they're part of our daily lives. I unreservedly recommend to all of our citizens to give every consideration to, to, to being vaccinated. I think that's the best way out of this process. I was pleased to be a part of the homecoming this past week. And one of our high school students spoke very avidly about that as well. It's nice to see young people stepping up and do that. So if you have questions, talk to your doctors or whoever. But please, please, can, and Garner is, is, in terms of statistics, I think we have improved some. At one time, we were not yet up to the 70% vaccination rate that Wake County, I think, had achieved, or that was a goal. But I can't say for certain because I haven't seen any data in just recent days. But certainly that is a worthy goal, I think, for our town is to try to ensure that we get to that level and surpass that. So I would appeal to all of our citizens to, if, if, if you have not yet been vaccinated, to give that serious consideration and to do it. Am I correct in saying that we have not taken our, our break and we're at the point where we can adjourn the meeting? I think. Sure enough.
Let me say, I, I believe the mayor, he, he was on TV last week because the Garner, South Corner game was broadcast on my R O D C. And he did interviews and he was on Instagram and on Twitter from, from that, from they, they're posting, the mayor did a fine job. He had a, he had a suit and tie on.
Yeah.
And so he, the South Corner folks said, so he sat on that side the first half of the game, and the second side, he comes strolling over to the second half.
There you go.
I stood up so he and his marshman could have a place to sit.
He gave me a seat.
And told him, he told him he loosened his tie up. It was, you know, he didn't have to have, had tie, had a tie up all the time during a high school football game.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But he did, he did a nice job representing us. I wanted to say that.
Well, you're, you're kind to say that. And they, 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 those people out there were very nice to us. I mean, they, they took us around, put us where we need to be. I, I just didn't get a chance to see Scotty while I was out there, but I know he was seen by a lot of people.
I saw him. I saw him last Friday. That was just, just as good as it was 10 years ago, was it?
Yeah.
Eight years ago and getting better. It was great.
Okay. And we can all collectively say thank you, Scotty, for your good representation of, of the traits and values of this town and so forth. Okay, council, that's all I have. So unless there's anything else for the good of the group, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Okay, motion made and seconded by Mr. Vance. If you favor adjournment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. I declare that this meeting of the council has adjourned until our next scheduled meeting.